All right, everyone. The hour was 6:00 PM. Having come and gone, we'd like to call the special meeting, know the city council, to order at 6:08 PM. Madam Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. We have all aldermen present. Tonight's agenda was posted. We do have copies for the public. Also in attendance, we have our city attorney, Carrie Lynn Kraftner. We have our city attorney, Mike Casper. We have our city clerk, Neil de Figs. We have our city treasurer, Jerry Tarko. We also have, in the back, our city administrator, Deanne Jeffrey, our deputy clerk, Jessica Coffey. In the back, we have our fire chief, Glenn Bockert, and then also our police chief, Kevin Colash, and two of our officers from Calumet City, our sergeants, and our officer from Calumet City. Is that correct, chief?
Sergeant's twin.
Sergeant's twins. So tonight's meeting is about three items. We did a roll call. We're on public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on this agenda? Or any item you want to bring to the city council? If so, please step to the mic.
My name is Frank Litchio. I own some property on the 900 block of Lucas Street, and I would like to see if there's somebody here from public works where we can get our street cleared off, because it's in very poor condition. There's somebody that we could...
Deanne, can you grab his information? If you can give your information to Deanne, she's right there standing up now. Ms. Lucas? She's right there.
I'm looking for your information.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address the city council? If not, under the mayor's report, we have invited, we got invited to a public-private tasting of Sunrise Sunset on September 25th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It will be for the city council and guests honoring city officials. As you know, Sunrise Sunset will be having a grand opening soon. They have opened business, but they want to make sure the city council come in and have a tasting. I have flyers for the council, and then I will email it to you as well. It's Wednesday, September 25th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and you can invite whoever you want to us, but it will be at 1455 Ring Road. So we want to make sure we send this to the council and elected officials. Also, I got a notice that our Green Alley's, and I will send this to you by Farnsworth, the alleys that we're doing under our Green Alley project, the alley on Madison, the alley on Oglesby, the alley on Green Bay, the alley on Hertz. They're anticipating that they will be done in six to seven weeks. They're trying to get them done sooner. Just for the aldermen, we'll make sure that you get these, the flyer from Farnsworth and the notice for all the street locations, just as for the Green Alley project that we have going on now. Last thing, we're going to start the holiday dinners in the senior buildings. The first one will be October 29th. We'll send this to the aldermen as well. The first one is the Parker River Oaks on the 29th, and we'll send you guys the schedule. Should be one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight dates, and we'll make sure everyone gets the three items I just mentioned. The next item, item five, is discussion of the agenda. I sent everyone a copy of the updated agenda for Thursday. On the updated agenda, there are a bunch of items that we will discuss in the executive session. I don't know if the council, we're going to have a meeting before the council meeting, where we're going to have the nine businesses be, come before the council? Do you guys want the same resolutions on the agenda as well? Alderman Tillman? They're on both agendas. It's on the special meeting agenda and the regular city council agenda. So under resolutions, under the updated agenda, we put the resolutions on both agendas and just left them there. So if you want them changed and just leave them on the meeting before the city council meeting, we can do that as well. So just let me know tomorrow.
I have a question about one of those.
Yes.
What I assume is one of those. So there's a redevelopment agreement at a residential address that I have. I'm curious what that's about. Item number two, 11-2.
Yeah, I don't think that's supposed to be a, let me get the correct address. I'll have Val call you tomorrow, Alderman.
Thank you.
Because I think that's one of the houses that we bought. 1539 Kenilworth. But I'll have Val call you tomorrow. There are also some items under financial matters which we will discuss in the executive session. We will have Attorney Solomon and then Attorney Walsh to present on items number one and two in the executive session. And then we will also have Rich Bruin to talk about the proposed settlement that's on the agendas as well. So we are anticipating executive session on Thursday. If you have any changes or additions, well, changes, please let me know. The agenda has to be posted tomorrow by 5:30.
Thank you, Mayor. Was there an update on 940 Sibley? I know you mentioned that Attorney Casper would provide an update regarding my request for redevelopment agreement on the property.
No, we don't have it yet, Alderman. Director Tillman was out. Director Tillman was out, so we sent it to everyone to get an update, a summary. So we don't have it now, but just to give a summary on that. So I know Director Tillman was deeply involved in that, as was Attorney Casper on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I know Director Tillman was on vacation, so I will send, send her a message to get that as quickly as possible.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Alderman Garner?
Thank you. I was emailed earlier today from the city clerk, reference to an agenda item that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on this, Alderman.
Oh, it is on this one?
Yes. Do you have the...
I got this one. It just wasn't in the attachment from the agenda that was posted.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. All right. If anything else on, please let me know before we post the agenda tomorrow. No more questions. We'll go to item number six, which is discussion and approval ordinance, many chapter two, mayoral eligibility. For this matter, I will turn this over to Attorney Carrie Lynn and also to Attorney Casper.
All right. So I think what would be easiest here, since we're heading into an election season, is kind of to remind everybody about the different referenda that the city has adopted related to terms, term limits, and eligibility of offices, and what has happened with all of those, because this has kind of been a mess over the past eight years. So in 2016, the city voters put a, passed a referendum imposing mayoral term limits. And after that, the city council never took any steps to implement the ordinance. And that was that no one could be mayor if they were elected mayor or alderman for four or more consecutive years. So that was passed by the electors. The city didn't implement it. The next thing that happened is that in April of 2017, the city voted on an aldermanic term limit referendum. And again, after that, the city did nothing to implement the terms of that. It doesn't really matter, though, that the city didn't do anything to implement either of those referenda, because in July of 2019, the General Assembly passed a law that said certain things. First of all, all term limits have to be prospective, so you can't count anyone's prior service against them. Second of all, term limits can only apply to the same office, so you can't say, you can't run for mayor if you've been an alderman for so long. And third, that the term, term limit statute preempted home rule authority with respect to certain things. So that new statute would apply to term limits imposed by referendum after November 8th, 2016. What happened next in 2020, presumably in the response to that litigation that said if you want to have a term limits referendum, this is what you have to do, the city put a different mayoral term limits question on the ballot. And that was on the ballot at the April 6th election. And that was a term limit saying that no one could be mayor for three or more four-year terms. After that, the city council did amend the city code related to those qualifications and put something on the books. The next thing, though, that happened was that in November of 2021, the city council passed a, an ordinance, wait a minute, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. There was, I'm sorry, there was one more referendum that was passed in 2020, and that was that you couldn't run for mayor if you were holding a statewide office. And in 2021, the city council passed an ordinance, and that's the one that is the subject of the ordinance today. And it said that effective after the 20, February 23rd, 2021 primary, no person can be eligible to seek nomination or election to, or hold the office of mayor if at the time of filing nomination papers, that person holds an elected paid office created by the constitution of the state of Illinois. The General Assembly, however, passed a new law after that in 2021, saying that any ordinance, referendum, or resolution of a local government requiring a General Assembly member to resign their state office to be eligible for a local state office is void and unenforceable. And it preempts any municipal ordinance, resolution, or referendum adopted on or after November 8th, 2016, which would include the city's ordinance. So we have a provision of the city code that is obsolete and unenforceable now, based on the new law that was passed in May of 2021, amending the Public Office of Simultaneous Tenure Act. So all this ordinance does is it deletes the part of the referendum that is now unenforceable under the new law. So we didn't want to have a section of the city code that was invalid, because going into election season, people are going to say, oh, if they look at the code book, they're going to think it's a valid law. So we just wanted to make sure, just like we cleaned up the other referendum in the past, after there was legislation invalidating it, that we did the same thing with this. So that's, that's all that this ordinance does. Any questions about that?
Do we have a copy of the state language?
Let's see here. I can tell you what it is. It's 50 ILCS 110 backslash five.
It was a large document when I tried to search it, but is there, do we have the specific language from that document?
Yes, it says, "Any ordinance, referendum, or resolution of a local government requiring a General Assembly member to resign their state office to be eligible for local elected So basically, the state's law, or not the state's law, the city's law is stricter than the state law, and the state says that we can't do that even as a home rule municipality.
I have a question. So as I'm reading our ordinance, it says, "Any public office created by the constitution," whereas the General Assembly law just says, you know, the General Assembly. So wouldn't this still apply to, say, the governor if he wanted to run for mayor of Cal City?
Yes. I think I said that the right way.
Yeah.
So to Alderman Tillman's point, technically, the ordinance that we have on the books now is not invalidated, because there are other offices that this would apply to outside of the General Assembly offices listed in the state statute?
Well, and the other alternative would be to keep that language in and put with the exception of members of the Illinois General Assembly. We could amend it that way, too.
Have there been any other communities that had similar eligibility requirements that have litigated this yet?
There's no other city that we could find that has that kind of eligibility requirement at all.
Hmm.
You guys were breaking new ground with this.
And it took a whole act of the state legislature, huh?
Is that a question you're directing at the attorneys, Alderman?
It was.
Oh, well, yes.
So the other ordinance is still, I noticed that there's, there was an ordinance before that said you had to, if you served more than three or four terms as alderman, you can't run for mayor as well. Since that one was addressed as well, is that something we have to amend as well?
I believe, let's see here. Let me look at this. We looked at that issue in January of 2023 for the city council. And the problem, the problem with it, it was, the referendum wasn't clear as to whether or not. It was only prospective in application, counting the numbers going forward or not. But we believe that, you know, it appears inconsistent, it could only be calculated prospectively in accordance with the law, but that those terms did not look like they could be severable under the way the wording of the term limits referendum was.
Yeah, I think there was a prospective one passed after all of that stuff happened, but I think it said it at four terms in the office. So like you said, it wasn't combined offices. So it's four terms as mayor, wouldn't have counted if you had, you know, three terms as alderman before that. And I believe there was a referendum to overturn that in '22 that failed. So I think that four terms is still on the books, but it was starting at, I think, this next election, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it's a little bit confusing, because we have the 2016 referendum that passed, and we have the 2020 referendum that passed related to mayoral term limits, and the term limits imposed in each of them are conflicting with one another. So if the 2016 referendum stands proactively and only related to the office of mayor, it imposes a term limit of four four-year terms. And that's different than the one that was approved in 2020, which was a term limit of three four-year terms. And the 2020 referendum did not state that it was attempting to repeal the 2016 one. I mean, so that's, alternatively, the best path would be to place another referendum on the ballot, just expressly repealing both the referendum and then, like, applying one that is coherent. Otherwise, we just live to fight that battle over which one prevails on a different day.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I missed. This is the last, what you just said?
Well, to clean it up, what we could do is figure out what do, what do the electors want it to be? Because we have one that says three four-year terms, we have one that says four four-year terms. Which one really applies, even if we count them both? Because now there's an argument that because they're two conflicting ones, we don't know which one applies. So just run another referendum, cleaning it up and saying this referendum, if it passes, is going to repeal 2016 and 2020. That way, we know for sure. Otherwise, there's this ambiguity going forward that people could fight about.
Didn't you say that the council didn't take action to create an ordinance regarding the referendum? Does that affect the analysis?
With respect to the 2016 mayoral term limits referendum and the 2017 aldermanic term limits referendum, the city council didn't take action. The city did take action with respect to the 2020 referendum, but that's the one that now is inconsistent with the new amendment to the state law. Very confusing. That's why I thought I better just go through the history of this, because it's, we've had so many different referenda on it that it's confusing. Did I leave out anything, Mike?
I don't think so.
Well, we have to do another referendum. Couldn't the council just create a new, you know, we just vote on something that fixes it?
Well, the issue of term limits is one of the things that's governed by the Illinois Constitution. And if we want to change the manner of selection of our office or the eligibility, it requires a referendum. So we would, we've done, we've done all these referenda so far on term limits with different degrees of success, but they technically didn't clean everything up. So we can't just take action of the city council to fix it, unfortunately.
But setting the term limits aside, if we're talking about just the section here, the ordinance here that we're discussing, the eligibility portion of it, I mean, I think, you know, to what you said, Attorney Kraftner, you know, the state passed a statute, obviously, targeting just this community. 10,000 voters came out and voted and approved this. And so I think, you know, we owe it to the residents to, you know, let the chips fall where they may. If the state passed a statute that overturns this ordinance, then if it becomes an issue in the future for an electoral board or the circuit court, let them decide on it. I don't think, you know, I think the 10,000-plus voters that came out and voted in favor of this referendum when it took place, we owe it to them to, to leave it on the books and let the courts decide it, if it comes to that at some point.
Well, I think we would recommend that the city council don't create litigation. It's not, there's nothing unclear about this. If we remove it from the books, there wouldn't be even a need to have an unnecessary court hearing on it, if that makes sense.
Would it be, it wouldn't be the city's litigation at that point, though, would it? Because if it was an electoral board case, it would be, it would be a political thing. It would be, the court case would be fought between...
So it sounds like you're suggesting that someone might file a bad faith objection, trying to argue that the city code triumphs over the legislation that specifically says the city can't do this?
If, if somebody did.
Alderman, it's, I often advise my clients that they ought not do something that's deliberately confusing to the constituents. There's an ordinance on the books.
Attorney Casper?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's an ordinance on the books that says, that limits eligibility to run. That's been held nonenforceable by the action of the General Assembly, which has the constitutional authority to preempt any municipality's powers, which it exercised. So it seems to me that if someone is thinking about running for office in your town and they'll go to the code to see what the rules are, they ought to get an accurate read of what the rules are. And this is simply to effectuate that accuracy for your citizens. Because if they go and they look at the code now, they're going to think that there's a rule that isn't a rule anymore. And so I always advise people, you should, I used to work in the General Assembly. Every year, we would have a bill that erased all the obsolete bills, just so people weren't confused by them. Some of them, you'd be astonished to learn what was still on the books, you know, 100-year-old bills and stuff like that. So I just think that you ought to do this, because you owe it to your constituents that the, when they're looking at what the rules are, they ought to be able to read the current rulebook and not an outdated one.
So what happens tonight if the city council takes no action? Even though the General Assembly took action?
Then we have a law that's unenforceable that remains on the book that is just confusing to future candidates.
Mayor, if I may?
Alderman?
Do we have any, I mean, was this rule specific to Calumet City or brought specifically to address the Calumet City referendum?
Well, there's not, the General Assembly's not allowed to pass specialized legislation. It was part of an election omnibus bill that addressed many different issues, including mayoral eligibility and markham and other things. But this law would apply to any other municipality that also did pass this kind of term limits thing. So you can say, well, Calumet City was the only one that did it, but it also provides guidance for other communities that are looking to do something like that. Mr. Casper, did I leave out anything on that?
Only that my research on this question determined that Calumet City was not only the only Illinois municipality that has imposed this rule. To the best of my ability to research it, Calumet City was the only municipality in the history of our nation to implement a rule that said you had to resign a state office in order to run for local office. I could find no other example of any municipality attempting to do that in the history of our country. So if your question is about targeting, I think that's the answer.
I mean, we've had this conversation over the years with residents, and I think it was, again, the overwhelming support for it. And just because it wasn't precedent, I guess, prior, doesn't mean that it was a, not a good idea, right? Or not a good faith approach to wanting to make sure that the office of mayor is focused on our local government, that there's no conflicts of interest as it pertains to state. There's a clear separation between the state authority and, or state, I guess, office and the local municipal office.
That's not what the rule says.
It doesn't specifically say that there needs to be a resignation.
In order to run, not to serve.
Well, the word resignation doesn't show up.
You cannot run for office. It's one thing to say if you run and you win, right? You can't hold both offices. But to even seek the office, so that would like be saying Barack Obama would have to resign from the US Senate in order to run for president. Just to run, not when he wins, right? That's effectively what this rule did.
And that makes sense. I mean, I can maybe go along with that. You know, so now you're, you're going to put yourself out there to run and then basically lose both offices, right? Which, which shouldn't be fair. So what if we amended to say you can't, you can't get sworn in then and hold two offices, but you can run? Can it be amended to read that way?
I don't think under this, under this law, the General Assembly passed.
You think, could we get a, I need a, I need a definite answer on this one.
Well, with respect to that, do we, if you're asking, do we have the ability to amend the city code now to fix this? We couldn't amend it in a way that established that requirement, because we'd be rewriting the words of the referendum. Now, can, can the voters put another referendum on? But this, that would have to still be... That would have to still be implemented by an ordinance, referendum, or resolution. And then, I mean, then it's a problem with the way the law by the General Assembly was worded.
Because I was always under that impression, and I guess I maybe was miscommunicating to residents, that the eligibility to run, you know, of course, anyone can run. It's just when... Prior to being sworn in, they would have to make that decision. So, it sounds like I was wrong in that description of what's...
Well...
What's the...
The language says, quote, "No person may run as a candidate for," comma, "or serve as," comma, "city mayor if when filing nomination papers for city mayor, that person holds an elected and paid office created by the Illinois State Constitution."
So, it does say run? Yeah.
It's called resign to run.
Yeah. And like I said, I believe that that's unfair. You know, I think, again, I think it should be applicable to getting the sworn in, like, not being able to get sworn in, but certainly should be able to run. I mean, I think that's a fair compromise, right? So, I guess what steps would have to be taken, and what would that look like, to be able to make sure that that's the language, I guess, that's presented?
The city council would have to put another binding referendum on the ballot. And if you wanted to do that, what we could do is we could clean up the, you know, the other two. But that would have to be... Well, you can't... It's too late now to put a question on the ballot for November.
In the state law, the preempting our home office says, quote, "Any ordinance, referendum, or resolution of a local government requiring a General Assembly member to resign their state office to be eligible for a local office is void in our constitution." So, I think saying that they have to resign to serve also be preempted by this. It would be preempted. I'll give you a...
Is there some ambiguity there you believe, or no? Not in your book?
To Alderman Tillman's point, our referendum doesn't mention specifically General Assembly. It mentions all offices listed in the Constitution of the State of Illinois. But, you know, to go back to something you just said earlier, Attorney Kasper, I mean, resign to run laws are on the books across the country. Florida, California, you can't run for one... There's a number of offices that you can't run for unless you resign the one that you currently hold.
There are none that require you to resign a state office to run for a local office. None that I can find, and I looked pretty hard.
But the concept of resign to run didn't get created here in Calumet City in 2020?
In terms of resigning...
The concept. The concept of having to resign one office to run for another was not created here.
For a state office to a local office, yes, it did.
Okay. But the concept in general was not created here?
No, the concept specifically to target one candidate, yeah.
It's not targeting one candidate. It doesn't say state representative. It doesn't say state senator. It says any office created by the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Unless I'm familiar with...
Currently, no. But this isn't... This was not specific to one election. If the city of Calumet City elected the state treasurer next, you know, in 2026, that person would not be eligible to run for mayor.
And potentially, if you're correct, then there are six people that it would still involve. You'd like to say that governor can't run for mayor of Calumet City? Fine.
Yeah, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Just to kind of clear up what seems like some contradictory thing. So, earlier, you said we can amend this language to include General Assembly or to exclude the General Assembly. And we could just amend it and then vote as a council. But then, when Alderman Everett, they made a suggestion, you said we would have to do a whole new referendum to do that amendment. What's the difference?
Those are two... So, there are two different questions. So, this one is, yes, if you want to change this, then you keep the language of the referendum and you incorporate the part that, with the exception of the Office of Illinois General Assembly member. If you put that in there, then, as Mike just said, then you still have the state treasurer, the governor, you know, they are still not eligible, and that would fix it. He was asking, was there a way we could amend the city code to fix the problem with the referendum? But there's not because of the way the law is worded. So, that's why it was two different answers.
Because of the way the referendum law is worded?
Yes.
Can you reread that?
Yeah. I think the point is that when the referenda is passed, that's the framework that the council of any municipality has to implement. And the council can't change the framework without bringing it back to the voters. The power to change the manner of selection rests in the voters, not in the council, under the Illinois Constitution. So, any change requires a referendum. And since what we're talking about is different than the first referendum that was invalidated by the General Assembly, it would have to be another referendum, because it would be different. Because you couldn't keep it the way it is, because it's unenforceable, because the power was preempted by the General Assembly.
Can you reread the referendum for me?
The referendum part?
Yeah, the referendum. Or if you have it, I could just look at it.
"No person may run as a candidate for or serve as city mayor if when filing nomination papers for city mayor, that person holds an elected and paid office created by the Illinois State Constitution."
I mean, the other thing that's a little weird about the way that that's worded is that somebody could not be elected at the time they filed their paper, and they'd be appointed to fill a vacancy in nomination, and still be able to hold the two offices simultaneously, because at the time of filing, there was not the problem, right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I follow. I... When he read the referendum earlier, I thought it said something different. I thought it separated the ideal of you can't hold the office when you run, but also you can't hold both offices at the same time, where it seemed like we could strike one section. But that don't seem to be the case.
But the other reason we're recommending that just the 2-39 be completely removed at the way that it is, is that even if we add in that exception, it still is trying to prohibit elected paid office created by the Constitution. There's still an argument that it's just invalid that way. So...
There are lots of... There are eligibility requirements to hold municipal office. They appear in the Illinois laws. And if you fail to satisfy them, then you're subject to removal through a legal process in the circuit court. You know, if you, like, an eligibility, a residency requirement, if you're no longer a resident, then you're subject to removal for not residing in your ward or your municipality anymore. And that's a circuit court action. And this referendum... But I'm sorry, let me go backward. That process of removal happens after you take the office, saying you're not eligible to serve in the office, right? And you can't file that complaint against someone, say, one of you doesn't live in your ward, until you're not breaking the law, until you become the alderman. So, you're not ineligible until you're both the alderman and not living in your ward. The two things. This said, no, even before you take the office, you're subject to challenge. And the reason for that, whoever wrote this, I believe, it's my opinion, was designed to take it away from a judge making the decision and giving the power to the electoral board here in Calumet City. So, that's why I believe it was written the way it was written, because then the decision-maker wasn't a judge, a disinterested judge, but instead was part of a political process here in the municipality at the time.
So, again, is there no way to create an ordinance that allows the running, but not the holding of two offices? That there is no process or path forward for that to happen?
Not absent another referendum.
And why is that?
Because the Illinois Constitution says if you're going to change the manner or term of selection of your officers, you have to do it by a referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions.
I have a statement, if I may. It's not so much a question. It may come up to be a question. But I'm just trying to process. No matter where or what side of this coin you are on, it seems like a disservice is done on behalf of the voters, because the municipality sets out a referendum, the voters vote on it, then the state assembly comes and overturns what the voters have voted for. And it just seems like my vote doesn't matter, because you're going to do what you want to do anyway on the state legislature's side.
Yeah, sure. That's a fair point. But you have to think about it in other terms. What if there was a municipality that passed this horribly offensive law that was discriminatory? And then, would the General Assembly not have the power to step in? You know, I mean, I think that there are certain circumstances where this is warranted. And I think the General Assembly was being responsive to this notion, you know, just let people run. Don't manipulate the eligibility rules for advantage. And let people run, and let the voters decide who they want to be their elected officials.
But then...
It's democracy.
It is manipulated eventually. I mean, it is manipulated by the state legislature. And then, you become a town like ours, where our library is run by a state representative, our garbage contractor is a state representative, our mayor is state representative, and no matter what side of the coin, if you live here and you say, hey, I don't want that. I want municipal government without the state telling me what to do, how to live. They don't get that, because at the end of the day, the state can come in and overturn their votes.
In the interest of openness, let everybody run, let the voters decide, as opposed to the ordinance, which is closeness. We're going to limit the options that are available to the voters. And I think the General Assembly took the position, we should let the voters decide who their elected officials should be.
Did the General Assembly consider, when they were, you know, debating this matter, that more than three times the number of average municipal voters that turn out for the entire municipal election voted in favor of this referendum? I mean, we had 71% turnout when this referendum was on the ballot. It passed with like 85% support from the community. Over 10,000 people voted in favor of this referendum, as opposed to the last mayoral election, where like 3,500 votes were cast between all of the mayoral candidates. And the General Assembly still felt it had the necessity to step in and disenfranchise those 10,000-plus voters that voted in favor of this. And I guess my question, that's really not a question to anybody, because there's only one member of the General Assembly here, obviously. My question would be to the attorneys, why the recommendation is to strike this from our ordinances rather than pursue potential litigation against the state on behalf of our 10,000-plus residents that enacted this ordinance and said... Because it wasn't the city council that enacted this, it was 10,000 residents. So, why would we want to roll over to the state and not fight for the 10,000 residents that said they want this?
Because I don't think there's a reasonable dispute that the Illinois Constitution empowers the General Assembly to preempt the powers of municipalities. I don't think there's a reasonable argument that they lack that authority. And the rules of professional ethics would dictate that Mr. Krasper and I not institute litigation that we think to be frivolous.
Due respect, Attorney Kasper, were you serving in any legal advisory capacity to the state assembly or the General Assembly when they passed this?
I was not.
You were not? Okay. Thank you.
Well, and also, three more points related to that. If anyone could ever figure out why the General Assembly votes any way on any legislation, they would have a special power that kind of transcends a lot of things. But the state is also immune from being sued in many instances. And even if some voters wanted to pursue some type of litigation, they wouldn't really have any kind of standing to do that. But as Mr. Kasper said, yes, the city could not undertake that.
Alderman Tillman, how do you want to... The motion? Would you like to table this matter? Would you like to further discuss this matter?
Well, it's my decision.
You're the chairman of ordinance and resolutions, Alderman, so if there's a motion to be made, we can...
I don't think our legal opinions would change in a month or two, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should strike the whole thing for reasons I stated earlier. I mean, we have to add the language, put the language of anything, but...
So, you would say leave the statute as is, but add to the end of it with the exception of the Office of Member of the Illinois General Assembly?
That was your recommendation.
What was the question? Attorney Carolyn?
Well, I think what we need to decide is, one, do you want to pass the ordinance as is? Or, two, do you want to keep in Section 2-39, but add to the end of it with the exception of the Office of Member of the Illinois General Assembly?
If I may, because Alderman Everett, I think your point, I can hear what you're saying, I think your point is actually a good one for discussion. Why are we doing this now? The General Assembly passed this law in 2021. The General Assembly passed this law for one particular reason in 2021. As Attorney Carolyn has already said, we were the only community affected by this portion of this law. Why are we doing this now? Why wasn't this brought to us before? Why didn't we have time to discuss this? And why was this sent to us 50 minutes before the meeting tonight?
Well, there is time to discuss this. It didn't come into play before, because this is the first election cycle in the four-year cycle where the Office of Mayor is up again. And you still have time. I mean, if you want to consider it for a month or two, you still have time.
Well, let's... Let me interrupt you, because let's go to the point of this. So, we all know that we're talking about me. So, let's just get that elephant out of the room. Let's get that elephant out of the room, just answer the question, and say me directly. And part of that is, it goes directly to me. And this referendum that was passed, that one of the aldermen has mentioned, that was passed by the voters, the voters didn't know the true story, because there were eight other referendums passed specifically targeting me. And part of that targeting was these ordinance that said no alderman can serve more than 14 years. That wasn't done in other state reps, who are also mayors, towns. You had six other mayors that were mayors and state reps. You had six other mayors, six other state reps that were also township supervisors. No other ordinance was passed in any of those communities, except Markham, where in Markham, the mayor was facing a challenge. And part of this law that was passed specifically said, challenged the member of the General Assembly. So, I didn't vote on this. This law was passed. When it was passed in Calumet City, you didn't tell the voters that we're targeting the mayoral eligibility and not allowing a member of the General Assembly to run for office. It just said mayoral eligibility, which the council had no power to change, that had to be changed in the General Assembly. So, the General Assembly took action on this and many other laws when they passed this in 2021. And if you remember correctly, we talked about this when we put another referendum on the ballot for the voters to change term limits for Alderman and to change term limits for this language. That language did not pass. So, here we are, the General Assembly passed that. And as Carolyn and Attorney Kasper stated, the General Assembly made action and made attempt to correct this. And that's before this council. So, whether you take action or not, sad to report, I can and will run for mayor of Calumet City. That's my intentions, and I'm going to do that. So, whether you vote for this or not tonight, I am running for mayor of Calumet City, because you can't prevent me from running for mayor of Calumet City. And we'll let the voters decide. So, don't usurp democracy by passing... So don't usurp democracy by passing frivolous referendums to stop the voters from learning the truth about who you want and who you want as mayor. That's what those eight other referendums, because remember, there was another referendum that said that any person cannot hold two offices and run for mayor. That was one of the other eight referendums that was passed by the city council. So I'm just telling you now that the General Assembly took action because out of the communities, there were one community, two communities that passed ordinances that attempted to take away the power of the voters to make an informed decision. Tonight before you, if you don't vote for it, you don't vote for it, but I'm here to tell you that I am running for mayor of Calumet City, and this ordinance that we have on the books will not stop me from running for mayor.
So Alderman Tillman, do you want?
So I don't think this, you know, for me, I don't think it has anything to do with you personally, it's the language of it applying to, you know, the whole other folks at the Constitution. And you given the recommendation saying that we can add the excluded language, which if that's legit, then that's, you know, that kind of answered my questions. I just had, you know, the only hesitation was because you later then said, you know, that we couldn't amend it or modify it as it related to other things. But you answered that question, or Casper answered that question, so.
So the question is, if you modified, would it be in violation of the state statute that was passed?
No, it's not, not fully the alderman.
Yeah, the modification would fix it because it says, with the exception of anyone running for that. So we're not prohibiting it, which is what is.
Right. So we don't need to do another referendum for this modification, which you already answered, but that was, you know, the hesitation I had. But if you're saying that that's your legal recommendation and that we can do it that way, it would have been cleaner if this assembly or the General Assembly just said, all offices created by the Constitution, and then it'll clearly be invalid.
So what would the suggestion be, Alderman? To, could you restate what the suggestion would be?
To pass the refer, to pass the ordinance as modified.
What would be the modified language? Oh, to pass this ordinance as modified.
As modified, if she could.
So that would be in the end of Section 2, delete the crossed out section completely, and then add to the end, and it stated, words of state of Illinois, comma, with the exception of the office of member of the Illinois General Assembly.
Yeah.
Could you, could you restate that for the clerk?
Sure. So we would modify the ordinance so that at the bottom of Section 2, the part that is now deleted would be restored, so that we would not be taking out that provision. And at the end, it would say state of Illinois, comma, and we would add, with the exception of the office of member of the Illinois General Assembly.
So we're keeping, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow this, I'm confused.
So at the end of this section.
We're keeping the struck out section?
Yeah, that stays.
Everything stays, okay.
Everything stays. At the end, change the period to a comma. With the exception of the office of member of the General Assembly. I guess, I guess.
No one else can run aside from the, a member of the General Assembly?
Let me fix your question. With the exception of the office of state senator or representative in the General Assembly. Those are the correct constitutional terms. That's what the Constitution calls a member of the General Assembly.
So what we're doing here is just aligning it with what the state is saying?
Yeah, you're you're saying that Governor Pritzker can't run for mayor.
And then at the end of that, can we say, due to, and then cite the statute?
We could say, in accordance with.
In accordance, right, yeah.
Public Act, whatever, sure.
Right.
So is a motion to direct the city attorney to make those changes and bring the ordinance back to the city council?
Or do you want to vote on it as amended?
I'm comfortable voting on it as amended. Just get it done, get it done with.
I would like to bring it back.
Yeah, but that's okay. Yeah, we can bring it back then. Let's just table it.
But the direction will be to make that those changes and bring it back? We don't need, do we need a motion to make those changes or just make those changes and bring them back?
Yeah, we could just make them, we can make the changes and just send it back. That's fine.
Any other questions on item number six?
Don't y'all have enough to do in the state that every state rep don't want to be mayor? I'm just asking.
No more questions.
On item seven, we received language from South suburban mayors and managers to pass a resolution to put on the ballot. Either you can, council can decide if you want it for February or April. Shall the city pass a resolution urging the state of Illinois to pass legislation that requires the state of Illinois to increase state funding for public schools that results in lower tax bills, property tax bills, and reduce tax burden on local local property owners and taxpayers, specifically those in the South suburban Cook County community? There were two more questions that they sent, but I will send this to the council. You guys decide, I believe we have until.
December 9th for the February election and January 13th for the April election.
We missed the August deadline. And Cook County, South suburban mayors and managers, I don't know how many communities put this actual question on the ballot. Do you know if any?
I don't know any, for the November election, I'm not sure, but I know several that are contemplating these for the, for the February, April elections.
Deanna, I know you. Okay. If you were working with Christie, can you get that for us, how many confirm, put that on the ballot for the November election?
And we'll send the questions to the alderman.
Happy to report, we don't have the executive session tonight, so there's nothing further to be brought before the city council tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:06 PM? Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Smith, Smith, I'm sorry, Smith, Smith. All in favor? Meeting adjourned at 7:06 PM. Thank you, everyone.